Good morning, everybody. And welcome to City Call and to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, November 13th, the year is 2001. City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. We can also be seen live on your cable station, Channel 35, viewed from the city's homepage via webcast or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Brinson, Galanter, Garcetti, Han, Holden, Labange, Misakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Rodeo, Thomas, Weiss, Sign, Padilla, 10 members present in the court, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. If I would ask everybody to please rise and ask one of L.A.'s finest to please lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
If you all place your right hand over your heart and join with me in pledging to this great flag of this country, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Pacheco moves, and Ms. Perry seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Burton moves, Ms. Misakowski seconds.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, item number three is confirmation of Richard Davis to the Board of Civil Service Commissioners.
If Mr. Davis is here, would he please come forward? Please have a seat. And I do believe public hearing on this confirmation has been held in committee. And I do not have requests from members of the public to speak on this item. Any members wishing to make any questions or comments? Seeing none? Madam Clerk, please open the roll on confirmation. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Congratulations, you are confirmed.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day. Next item, please.
On the regular agenda, items noted for public hearing, item number one is a protest against Grand Canal Rehab by Onoc Lagoon to Washington Boulevard. That matter should be continued to December 11th for the ordinance to be presented.
I do not have requests from members of the public to speak on this item. We shall open the public hearing and continue the matter until December 11th. Next item.
Item number two is also a public hearing item. It's a Hall Root appeal in Council District 5.
Mr. Weiss? Mr. Weiss calls item two special. Next item, please.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items four through 11.
Items four through 11, public hearing has been held on these items. Members wishing to call any special? Ms. Misakowski calls item 10 special. Any other specials? Items four through 11. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Items four through 9 and number 11. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, items 12 through 17 are items for which public hearings have not been held, and I understand there's a request on item number 13 from Council Member Reyes to continue that to Friday.
Request members to continue item 13 without objection. Items 12 through, is it 17 or 12 through 27?
I'm sorry, 12 through 27.
12 through 27 before us, I have cards on item 26, let's call that special. Any other specials, members?
Simply ask that 25B continue to Friday?
Request to continue item number 25. 25B only. Continue or special? 25B continued till this Friday. Any other specials? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, items 12 through 17 are items for which public hearings have not been held, and I understand there's a request on item number 13 from Council Member Reyes to continue that to Friday.
Request members to continue item 13 without objection. Items 12 through, is it 17 or 12 through 27?
I'm sorry, 12 through 27.
12 through 27 before us, I have cards on item 26, let's call that special. Any other specials, members?
Simply ask that 25B continue to Friday?
Request to continue item number 25. 25B only. Continue or special? 25B continued till this Friday. Any other specials? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, on the supplemental agenda, well, actually, the next item would be the closed session, item you wish to hold that on the desk.
Let's hold that on the desk.
The next items would be on the supplemental agenda, items 29 through 33, public hearing has not been held, and item number 30 has a committee report that's going to be submitted. I am not sure if that has been submitted as yet.
Well, let's hold 30 on the desk. I have cards on item number 29, let's call that special. Items 31 through 33, members, any specials? Mr. Garcetti calls 31 special. Items 32 and 33, 31 is not called special. 31 through 33, do not have requests from members of the public to speak on these items. We'll deem the public hearing open and closed. Last call for specials on 31, 32, and 33. 32 has amending motions, we'll call that special. Anybody wishing to speak on item 31 or 33? Madam Clerk, please open the roll on items 31 and 33. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Item number 10 called special by Council Member Misakowski.
Item number 10, Ms. Misakowski.
Mr. President, I would just like to add, there's an amending motion that's being circulated just to increase the grant amount of the award. This is for Operation ABC, which is a program with the Alcohol Beverage Control State Agency to help deal with the businesses that are selling liquor and selling it perhaps sometimes to minors. The sting operation that has been very successful, we, the only city has continuously gotten the maximum amount from Sacramento, and the minor amendment that's circulating is just to increase the award, so I moved the amendment and the committee report.
Amending motion on item number 10. Anybody wishing to speak on item number 10? Seeing none, I believe we can take a vote on item 10 as amended. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Item 10 as amended is approved. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, item number six called special inasmuch as there is card from the public.
Item 26. Item 26 is now before us, the council calls forward Samuel Unger on item number 26, Mr. Unger.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the City Council. I'm Samuel Unger, a senior water quality control engineer with the California Regional Water Quality Control Board, Los Angeles region, also known as the Regional Board. I'm here today at the request of Dennis Fickersen, Regional Board's, excuse me, executive officer, to express the Regional Board's support for Councilwoman Galanter's motion for a task force to develop and implement a faster public notification of sewage spills and beach closures task force. The Regional Board thinks this motion is a good idea. The current program is inadequate, as evidenced by the events of November 3rd, 2001, and the failure to notify the regulatory agencies and public in a timely manner. When a sewage spill of 1.3 million gallons was unreported to the public for more than a day and a half, thereby closing beaches, impairing water quality, endangering public health, there is a serious problem that needs to be addressed. As you know, the Regional Board is the regulatory agency responsible for protecting water quality within Los Angeles and Ventura counties, including the city of Los Angeles. The city operates its sewer system and its wastewater treatment plants, including spill notification requirements, under permits issued by the Regional Board. The Board has expertise on water quality issues that could greatly benefit the task force and the request that you consider our participation on the task force. While we support this motion, it is important to note that the council's proposed, the proposed motion addresses only spill notification, and it does not address the causes of sewer spills and the methods for reducing the frequent spills from the city's sewer systems. In summary, we applaud the City Council for considering this motion, and the Regional Board is prepared to support the task force to advance our shared interest in improving water quality in the Los Angeles cities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on item now before us, members wishing to speak. Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, members of the council, this is a very good suggestion and a proposal. I'd like to amend it to include spills that affect the Los Angeles River. As you know, there's a great movement and a rebirth of the Los Angeles River, and all the way we're building recreation areas along our river, near the river, there's storm trains that enter it, and I think I'd like to ask that we amend it to include the Los Angeles River and the Tahunga Wash, the two major tributaries that runs in from your district at Hanson Dam, to include that as well as the Los Angeles River.
Mr. Reyes.
I'd like to join my calling, Tom Labange, on that effort. I'd like to second that. Council members of the public, we should know that right now the railroad companies are looking at how to reuse their land, some of it is for sale, understanding as soon as they get some opportunity to move out of Taylor Yard, they will. It's not in the near future, we know it's in the works, this falls in line with that whole process. We have a unique opportunity with the cornfield and the Taylor for state investment for a park there as well, so again, this gives us that added boost and heightens the focus on what we should be doing for the rivers. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none? Ready for a vote? Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Oh, wait a minute, before we take a vote. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 29 called special by Council Member Misakowski.
Item number 10, Ms. Misakowski.
Mr. President, I would just like to add, there's an amending motion that's being circulated just to increase the grant amount of the award. This is for Operation ABC, which is a program with the Alcohol Beverage Control State Agency to help deal with the businesses that are selling liquor and selling it perhaps sometimes to minors. The sting operation that has been very successful, we, the only city has continuously gotten the maximum amount from Sacramento, and the minor amendment that's circulating is just to increase the award, so I moved the amendment and the committee report.
Amending motion on item number 10. Anybody wishing to speak on item number 10? Seeing none, I believe we can take a vote on item 10 as amended. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Item 10 as amended is approved. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, item number six called special inasmuch as there is card from the public.
Item 26. Item 26 is now before us, the council calls forward Samuel Unger on item number 26, Mr. Unger.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the City Council. I'm Samuel Unger, a senior water quality control engineer with the California Regional Water Quality Control Board, Los Angeles region, also known as the Regional Board. I'm here today at the request of Dennis Fickersen, Regional Board's, excuse me, executive officer, to express the Regional Board's support for Councilwoman Galanter's motion for a task force to develop and implement a faster public notification of sewage spills and beach closures task force. The Regional Board thinks this motion is a good idea. The current program is inadequate, as evidenced by the events of November 3rd, 2001, and the failure to notify the regulatory agencies and public in a timely manner. When a sewage spill of 1.3 million gallons was unreported to the public for more than a day and a half, thereby closing beaches, impairing water quality, endangering public health, there is a serious problem that needs to be addressed. As you know, the Regional Board is the regulatory agency responsible for protecting water quality within Los Angeles and Ventura counties, including the city of Los Angeles. The city operates its sewer system and its wastewater treatment plants, including spill notification requirements, under permits issued by the Regional Board. The Board has expertise on water quality issues that could greatly benefit the task force and the request that you consider our participation on the task force. While we support this motion, it is important to note that the council's proposed, the proposed motion addresses only spill notification, and it does not address the causes of sewer spills and the methods for reducing the frequent spills from the city's sewer systems. In summary, we applaud the City Council for considering this motion, and the Regional Board is prepared to support the task force to advance our shared interest in improving water quality in the Los Angeles cities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on item now before us, members wishing to speak. Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, members of the council, this is a very good suggestion and a proposal. I'd like to amend it to include spills that affect the Los Angeles River. As you know, there's a great movement and a rebirth of the Los Angeles River, and all the way we're building recreation areas along our river, near the river, there's storm trains that enter it, and I think I'd like to ask that we amend it to include the Los Angeles River and the Tahunga Wash, the two major tributaries that runs in from your district at Hanson Dam, to include that as well as the Los Angeles River.
Mr. Reyes.
I'd like to join my calling, Tom Labange, on that effort. I'd like to second that. Council members of the public, we should know that right now the railroad companies are looking at how to reuse their land, some of it is for sale, understanding as soon as they get some opportunity to move out of Taylor Yard, they will. It's not in the near future, we know it's in the works, this falls in line with that whole process. We have a unique opportunity with the cornfield and the Taylor for state investment for a park there as well, so again, this gives us that added boost and heightens the focus on what we should be doing for the rivers. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none? Ready for a vote? Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Oh, wait a minute, before we take a vote. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 29 called special, there's a card from the public.
Item number 29 now before us, the council calls forward Mr. Jim McQuiston.
Good morning, Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. I rise in support of the city attorney's letter. I am very concerned about the fact that the secessionists are trying to make part of the California Government Code surplus, and if we interpret that particular part which they are trying to ignore, the city is, the secessionists take nothing from the city, no assets whatsoever, so I'm very gratified that the city attorney is putting in this question. I do also question the fact that the county council has a conflict of interest in trying to decide this matter, because if the city really protests transferring its assets, the section in the California Government Code says the county is supposed to pick up the difference, so that means that the county, if we're ruling against the city, is actually ruling in favor of its own interests, which has never done in the past.
Thank you very much. Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the desk is a letter that the city attorney has prepared to transmit to the county council, raising some issues on, as the county council has asked the city attorney to give them an opinion, the county council has asked all of the entities involved in the LAFCO issues to provide information to them, as county council is now going to consider its view as it was going to report back to LAFCO. The city attorney, this is essentially a status of, a point of information right now to let us know, the city attorney has transmitted this letter, is transmitting this letter, and is before us just for our review, but the city attorney is going to be transmitting it. It does deal with the issue of asset transfer, state law, and how the codes react to each other, and so I'm asking that we move forward on this.
Thank you very much. I believe a brief summary is in order.
Attorney's office, before you, you have this letter that we're going to be sending to the county council's office. As Council Member Misakowski explained, the county council has invited the attorneys for the applicants and the attorneys for the city to provide their own perspective on a question that is before the county council's office. LAFCO wishes to know the extent to which, if any, the LAFCO has the ability to transfer assets of the city as part of a special reorganization without the city's consent or without compensation to the city. And the research that we have conducted indicates that the law says that there are reasons to believe that LAFCO's authority is open to serious doubt in that regard. We know that the statute under which LAFCO operates, the Cortezy-Knox Local Government Reorganization Act of 1985 acknowledges the authority of LAFCO to transfer assets in certain circumstances directly and other circumstances, apparently for compensation, but the analysis goes on beyond the face of that statute, because there is a long history of constitutional constraints that are presented to the legislature with regard to the taking of municipal assets. I mention the legislature because LAFCO is essentially an extension of the California Legislature, and the constraints upon legislative authority with regard to municipal assets goes way back, and in fact, it's even current today where we've had decisions in the relatively recent past, at least back, a case involving the city in 1963, involving the Griffith Park and the condemnation of land in Griffith Park for freeway. It was decided in that case that compensation was owed to the city for the taking of city property by the state of California, so it's on that basis that we are sending over this letter to the county council's office for its consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members wishing to speak? Mr. Burton?
I don't have a problem with sending the letter over, because it is a area that is controversial, and undoubtedly probably the courts may have to decide the issue, but having served on LAFCO for, well, I, until recently, I was the only representative on LAFCO the city had ever known, and basically Senator Robbins carried the legislation for me that could give the city a seat on LAFCO, which at that time was totally controlled by the county of Los Angeles. I do believe that LAFCO does have authority to place a proposal before the voters that will make those decisions. Hopefully, before that happens, there will be some sort of agreement or negotiations between both sides that would agree on what would happen if it should be approved by the voters. Of course, we don't know that that's going to happen, but obviously, there is nothing to be gained by a controversial separation, or even, I think, any controversy that takes place prior to the election simply aids the side of the secessionists, and I don't believe that's the city's goal. And I speak as somebody who had to be neutral, because I was sitting in a judicial position. Now, as an advocate, as an alternate, I can speak out a little bit, but I can tell you that some of the things I've seen the city do simply play into the hands of those that wish to separate. So, I think that we need to be very careful on how we get the information, and we should try to avoid controversy and things that will wind up in litigation as much as possible, and if our goal is to try to bring the city together.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Any other members wishing to speak? Mr. Holden?
I just missed the part of the letter that you're going to send to LAFCO, and I heard Mr. Burton talk about litigation, likely litigation, and the fact that we ought to make a good faith effort. I think we already made a good faith effort, and I don't think we're trying to generate any opposition, I mean, support for separation, because that's not where we are, but I don't think that LAFCO should arbitrarily, they're not elected, they didn't create these debts and obligations on the part of the city or the, those that wish to secede from the city. So, it should... of constitutional constraints that are presented to the legislature with regard to the taking of municipal assets. I mention the legislature because LAFCO is essentially an extension of the California Legislature, and the constraints upon legislative authority with regard to municipal assets goes way back, and in fact, it's even current today where we've had decisions in the relatively recent past, at least back, a case involving the city in 1963, involving the Griffith Park and the condemnation of land in Griffith Park for freeway. It was decided in that case that compensation was owed to the city for the taking of city property by the state of California, so it's on that basis that we are sending over this letter to the county council's office for its consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members wishing to speak? Mr. Burnson.
I don't have a problem with sending the letter over because it is a area that is controversial, and undoubtedly probably the courts may have to decide the issue. But having served on LAFCO for, well, until recently, I was the only representative on LAFCO the city had ever known, and basically Senator Robbins carried the legislation for me that could give the city a seat on LAFCO, which at that time was totally controlled by the County of Los Angeles. I do believe that LAFCO does have authority to place a proposal before the voters that will make those decisions. Hopefully, before that happens, there will be some sort of agreement or negotiations between both sides that would agree on what would happen if it should be approved by the voters. Of course, we don't know that that's going to happen, but obviously, there is nothing to be gained by a controversial separation or even, I think, any controversy that takes place prior to the election simply aids the side of the secessionists, and I don't believe that's the city's goal. And I speak as somebody who had to be neutral because I was sitting in a judicial position. Now, as an advocate, as an alternate, I can speak out a little bit, but I can tell you that some of the things I've seen the city do simply play into the hands of those that wish to separate. So I think that we need to be very careful on how we get the information, and we should try to avoid controversy and things that will wind up in litigation as much as possible, and if our goal is to try to bring the city together.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. Any other members wishing to speak? Mr. Holden.
I just missed the part of the letter that you're going to send to LAFCO, and I heard Mr. Burnson talk about litigation, lack of litigation, and the fact that we ought to make a good faith effort. I think we already made a good faith effort, and I don't think we're trying to generate any opposition, I mean, support for separation because that's not where we are, but I don't think that LAFCO should arbitrarily, they're not elected, they didn't create these debts and obligations on the part of the city or those that wish to succeed from the city. So it should be, if you go to litigation, fine, but I think that's a proper place for it to be settled, decided, the courts. What their share responsibility obligation, or our share responsibility obligation, so Mr. Burnson, your point's well made, but if we have to fight it out, let it be in court, and I can't think of any other place, sometime in court you'll have a good deal, but hopefully they'll be fair on this one. We'll make sure the judge lives in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please. Mr. Burnson.
I would ask for reconsideration of item number one. It has come to my attention that there are some corrections that need to be made, Ms. Galanter was not here at the time, and needs to make some corrections on it.
Okay, so reconsideration of item number one. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Ms. Galanter.
Thank you, Mr. President. The reason, I'm sorry I wasn't here at the beginning, I'm actually excused today because this item is being heard at the Coastal Commission today. What we need to do is, with item one, is to close the ballot as of the end of today and continue the item, the rest of the item, so that the clerk will have time to tally the ballots and report back to us in two weeks. But we don't want to continue the balloting open because we're trying to actually get this project started. We have notified all of the property owners who would be affected by this of the fact that the project has been changed slightly at the request of the Coastal Commission, and so we wanted them to have an opportunity, which is why the balloting is still open even to today, we wanted them to have an opportunity to see the new plans and to be able to vote with reasonable information, but it's a project in the coastal zone with a very narrow window to get the construction done before the least-turned nesting season when they don't let you construct, and so what I would ask that we do, what I move that we do is close the balloting as of the end of that protest period at five o'clock today, and then continue the balance of the item so that the clerk will have the two weeks to report.
Thank you, Ms. Galanter. Any other members wishing to speak? Okay, so with that revised appropriate action, we will once again close the protest time period and continue...
We're closing the protest.
Correct. Continuing the item for preparation.
Continuing the item for the report back to council and the ordinance and to us. Thank you.
Okay, without objection, that is the order. Madam Clerk?
Next item, Mr. President, item number 30 is still on the desk. I am not sure about the report, if that's been distributed yet.
Okay, let's continue to hold that on the desk as we await the report.
The next item is item number 32, that was called special for amending motions.
Ms. Zakowski, item 32.
Mr. President, this is the issue that was introduced last week to ask the voters to put on the ballot for next March, an issue affecting our emergency operations systems, upgrade of police facilities, and a community, a police facilities, community facilities bond, but really oriented towards the issues that have affected us nationwide since September 11th. I would like to start by asking, I saw both the chief of police and the fire chief, and would like to ask them to come forward. And ask them to give us a little bit of an overview on the events, obviously, since September 11th, but specifically how this measure and what we are including in this bond might be helpful and supportive of the departments who are, we call on for our first responders in the event of any kind of incident.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity and really are pleased that the council has put this motion on the agenda to be discussed. Many of you may be aware that most of the facilities, particularly those in the police department, were built between 1955 and 1979. Many of them were built without the consideration of addressing community issues. Certainly, they were not built considering the influx of female officers, and since the this period of time, we've had a significant number of callosia, infrastructure issues, electrical problems, and a variety of things that have made these stations currently, as they operate, well beyond their life cycle. We have seen over and over deteriorating plumbing, the mechanical process, the asbestos, many things that we've began to try to mitigate with alteration improvements, and certainly the overcrowding, and as you remember in our Board of Inquiry report, one of the major issues of moving some of our commands into isolated and substations that did not have the proper supervision also causes some management and supervisory concerns. We have looked at a variety of needs for the city of Los Angeles in the sense of buildings and our infrastructure, and just one quick reminder that in Prop. 2, in 89, we had a bond fund just under $200 million, and in that bond fund, we've completed almost everything that was, funding was available. You received, the 77th station was built out of that bond fund, the Edward M. Davis EVOC or Emergency Vehicle Center, the Amoson Training Center was purchased, the Newton Station was built out of that bond fund, the brand-new North Hollywood Replacement Station, and also currently the North Valley Station, which is the 19th, the land acquisition was purchased out of that bond fund. We also made a variety of upgrades and innovations and renovations throughout other stations in Wilshire, Foothill, Southwest, built parking structures, and a variety of stations of Van Nuys, Wilshire Station, Southwest, and Foothill. And so as we look to the future for these bond, this new bond fund, what we have based it on is a study that was done or requested by the city of LA, the COSMOT and the Melinda Study, that we spent over a million dollars assessing what are the needs and infrastructures of LAPD. They recommended at some point in time that every station that is in operation be replaced over a measured point in time, and that we eventually get to approximately 25 operational stations in the city of LA. And so that study basically is what we've used as a basis to make these recommendations. Their proposal over a several-decade period recommended about $1.3 billion, and that's in $95, as to a complete reassessment of stations, redesign of stations, and a complete changeover of existing facilities. What we have before you today as a proposal, and we believe that this is the best in the sense of what, over the next seven to 10 years of the life of a bond fund, is that we look at a variety of things, the four stations that need to be replaced, that's Harbor Division, West Valley, Hollenbeck, and Rampart. We also believe that the new station should be built on a larger footprint of 60,000 square feet. Most of the stations that they're replacing would be in the area of about 25,000 square feet, plus the current allocation of resources is generally doubled to triple what was originally planned for those facilities. We also believe we need to go back and add the Mid-Wilshire Station, which would be the 20th station, to this bond fund that we did not build in the 1992 bond fund, and that would give us one new station and four replacement stations. We also believe that we can extend the life of Van Nuys Station by moving Van Nuys Valley Bureau and Valley Traffic into a facility, that land is already available at the General Motors site, and that we now have 800 people working on a Van Nuys Station, which originally was scheduled for about no more than 300 to 400. So we believe we can extend the life of Van Nuys by moving resources out of that facility. But then we also believe that since September 9th, a couple of issues, or September 11th, a couple of issues that come to the forefront, we need to be more and more conservative of where we have placed our bomb detection resources. Currently, our bomb dogs are housed only at the airport, our bomb unit is housed at Northeast Station in a facility far beyond, below the standards they should have. We believe for consistency and also response to the community, there should be a bomb facility in the valley and one in the metropolitan area to cover the rest of the city, and that would be certainly budgetary resource to expand the bomb unit over time. We also believe that there's a need to reconfigure the current EOC that's on the fourth sub-level of City Hall East and rebuild that along with a fire and police department, department operations center, and also a fire dispatch center. Should all be rebuilt in a configuration that is not in the same general area, at least close to downtown area, but yet have the ability to be responding to the needs of the city. That is kind of a thumbnail sketch of what we believe the needs are in covering replacement stations, a new station, and not forgetting that the 19th station is well on its way with Michel funds, and that property has been purchased through the existing bond fund. I certainly would like Chief Matvey to talk about the fire dispatch center so that he can give you an oversight of the need for fire dispatch since September 11th.
Thank you very much. I'd like to direct my comments to the fire department portion of the bond, which deals specifically with our dispatch center, our operations control center. If you recall, in our bond that we put together a little over a year ago, that was one of the high priorities, but because of our desire to address the community needs out in the fire stations, we limited that bond specifically to fire stations out in the community, which is well on its way. One of those fire stations, Fire Station 4, will be relocated downtown. The plan was always to co-locate that with our dispatch center so that we could have the benefit of having a station located with dispatch to give us the ability to have firefighters there trained as dispatchers and have additional staff savings in having a section, a fire station with our dispatch that would also be co-located with the emergency operations center and enable us to make a smooth transition to staffing, our responsibilities on an ongoing basis with staffing, the fire station, but also the important element of co-locating with the emergency operations center. The benefit of this bond and providing the money is to very much enhance our capabilities to manage large-scale emergencies, specifically in the environment that we're in now with the threat of terrorism, is to have the police-fire-emergency operations center located, the department operations of all three of those departments in the same location. Additionally, in this bond, there's a $25 million component for ongoing capital improvements. This is to stations that are not in the bond, that are not going to be addressed by our existing bond, just to keep those stations maintained so that we can continue to keep up with the upgrades, but also to accommodate modifications in those stations, to accommodate additional resources that we are putting in those stations, whether they be ambulances or additional fire resources. So this is an important element, the second element in our long-term capital improvement program dealing with our emergency needs.
Thank you, Mr. President, and both of the fire department and the police department. Members of the council, this is a new day, and we have to forge a new partnership with our public safety entities and our communities. Just today earlier, I think, without objection, we dealt with the matter, asking that whether or not, our new neighborhood councils, whether it's feasible, that they can be involved in our emergency response training and get certification. As we are going to be asking our communities to link hands with our public safety officers, we have to provide the facilities and the capability to reach every area of this city. I particularly think that some of the issues dealing with the dispatch, the capability to upgrade and enhance our ability to dispatch, particularly on a large-scale basis, our ability to decentralize and have bomb squads located more conveniently throughout the city, to be able to be responsive in a moment's notice as opposed to having to come from far reaches of the city, and to touch every area of the city with upgrade of facility, with upgrade of provision, and with the capability at a centralized station in our emergency dispatch for both fire and other kind of emergency is critical. So I think we need to engage in that partnership, engage our communities in that partnership, and clearly engage and give our facilities and our public safety departments the wherewithal and the capability in their facilities to be responsive to the growing needs that I think we're going to be seeing as a society, particularly in this city. I would also like to mention that I have joined with the maker of this motion, Congressman Nick Pacheco, there's an amendment, there was a miscalculation on one of the items for the replacement police stations, so the amendment 32A makes that modification and does show the total for the bond that we would be putting forward is $525 million for public safety efforts in the city.
Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President and colleagues, I simply wanted to stand in support of the bond and the effort to modernize our facilities and bring us to state of the art. As you know, we need to be able to respond quickly to any crises, and we also need to support our fire department and police department and providing facilities that they can work in, that make them efficient, and be able to work with our communities in a quick manner. I do want to point out, as Councilmember Zakowski pointed out, that we do have an amendment and would ask for your support, 32, as amended by 32A, and simply just can't say enough about how important it is to move on this today.
Mr. Holden.
This matter has been before the voters a number of times since they voted for close to $200 million in the early, in the late 80s, early 90s, and for police stations. In fact, one of those stations was to be the station number 20. Am I right, chief? That's right. How many times, then the voters say, how many times have they voted for this? Then they take the money at their own discretion, the CLA and CAO divvying it up. No, well, I didn't vote for it, you guys did. And so it's a majority of the council, 14 to 1 again, and they were voting for appropriate the money expended in areas which the voters had not been requested to vote for in support of those purposes, and then you got Southwest and Rampart, because we went over there. They were crowded, they didn't even have showers, and okay, they needed to be expanded, they needed to be added to. And then again, just the fire department. I mean, it's kind of a dirty trick in my view. You wrapped the needs for renovating, putting a new fire station with the library bond act. That's just about two years ago, isn't it? Am I right?
And animals.
Animal service, animal service, because everybody loved the animals, and you say, vote for the animals, and the animals carried the bond where you're in.
I think it was the other way around.
No, 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 no. You guys didn't say, let's do this separate. You cut a deal, and you put it with the animals. Okay? Isn't that right? That's what you did, right?
Two bonds were...
Yeah, yeah, you merged the two with the animals. And the point I'm trying to make, Mr. President, members, is that the voters are going to wake up again. If we encourage them to vote for this and saying there's really truly a need, at least the new members ought to be in position to say, you deceived them once, don't deceive them twice, if you're going to ask for Division 19 and 20, these provided for those purposes and Rampart improvement as well. We could have got the Sheridan Hotel for $9 million. Adequate space for Division 20, all the parking space you needed, and you guys didn't go forward on it. Didn't go forward on it at all, and you had the money. Now, I said housing projects for seniors affordable, but we could have had that as Division 20, and we walked away from it. So I don't really know what you want. You know, it makes it kind of tough for me to vote for something for $500 million when you could have got something for 700, and reasonable amount of money to renovate the place for that purpose and that use, and you could have had it.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me, can I just ask a few questions and then hold my time? I just want to make sure that for the police department and the fire department, I think what the city is concerned about right now is, are we prepared? Are we ready to respond in light of September 11th? Is this city in every single neighborhood prepared to respond to a major disaster, terrorist attack, hazardous material explosion in this city? And will this money be enough to provide both? I want to hear from the chief, both chiefs. Is this your wish list? Is this what it will take to prepare this city? And then maybe you could briefly respond to, you know, just in plain English, how does this improve response time? How does this prepare every neighborhood in the city? How will this money, if the voters... How will this money, if the voters approve this, really make this city once and for all, although it's never once and for all? But at this point, will we be the most prepared that we can be, both from public safety and both from fire and police? And then I have two comments I have to make.
Let me just comment. I think that, as you mentioned earlier, this whole process is evolving, just as we had Prop M and we built the communications center and we begin to, will enter those communications centers within the next year. The minute that we're in them, we should be planning to replace them with new technology, new radios. Same thing with the buildings. Most of our buildings were built in that era of the 50s and 60s. This bond fund, like the last one, should be a six to seven-year approach. At the end of that, we should be looking at what stations that need to be replaced after this bond fund. It should be evolving process to ensure that the facilities are built with the proper infrastructure, that they accommodate the needs of the current needs of the community and that they're large enough to accommodate the department. But this should not be viewed as a single item to be funded and that we never think about police buildings again. The last additional police station we built in this city was 1978, the southeast station. It became our 18th station. Since then, we have remodeled, repaired, replaced existing stations. We believe that at some point, to give adequate supervision and addressing the needs of the community, we must grow to about 24 to 25 police stations amongst the 470 square miles so that the response time is reduced, there's more than adequate space for personnel and that the community and most of these stations have a community room and participate in partnerships with the police department. Our older stations do not accommodate those changes in our philosophy. So I think if the message we send to the public, we need this, at this point, we need to be thinking about planned replacement in seven years when this bond fund is resolved and we need to continue that throughout our history to ensure that the stations are at least adequate and as new issues come before us, that our new facilities can accommodate.
From the fire department's perspective, we've had a long-term master plan to deal with exactly what you're talking about, Councilwoman. I think without a doubt, this terrorism environment now has validated that plan. In our bond that we passed two years ago, eight of the 19 stations are what we call regional stations. They will be built with the design in mind, that there'll be a community room there for community training. What we're finding and you'll be seeing in the next couple of weeks, as I'll be approaching each one of your offices, we are organizing meetings out in the community, at our fire stations, specifically to have meetings on terrorism, informational meetings, to calm the public down, to help the public come to grips with this new environment. Again, I've been preaching the way to combat it is through preparedness. That's going to require a greater responsibility, a greater expectation on the services of the fire department and we need to have our fire stations prepared for that. Coupled with that, without a doubt, as you've all seen as new council members and some of the council members that have been here for a number of years, we've got a LEGUP, we've got a terrorism early warning group which comprises about six or seven different permanent agencies that are involved, but other agencies through an ad hoc basis. Without a doubt, our emergency operations center, the integration between police and fire, FBI, sheriffs and county fire is a model that's being practiced across the country. We need to keep pace with that with the new emergency operations center. And I think that the challenge now is, do we need to separate them from other key essential city functions so that we are more conscious of security? They serve us well in earthquakes and other types of natural disasters. We need now to build them as we have the opportunity to protect them against some of the mad-maid threats that we're starting to face now.
Thank you. And one of the original documents I was reading that looked like it was a fire training center that you had asked for that is not in this bond issue. Is this something that you feel is something we need to ask for at this point? My sense is, we've already got two amendments on the floor adding more money to this issue. If this is something you really feel is important for the fire department, is that something you think we should add to this?
Without a doubt, the training center is an important element. The thing that has held us up there is our inability to get the federal government to finally deed that property over. We've been working with Councilman Reyes's office for many years. I know he's done it coming up to, it's been five years into work. The problem is I can't guarantee we'll have the control over that facility, but that is a need that we have.
Okay. I'm happy to stand in support of this. I just wanted to make sure, I believe if we go to the voters and we make the case for, clearly for emergency preparedness, increased response time, making every neighborhood in the city feel safe, I think they will support what we're asking. I want to make sure we're asking for the right things this time. My only concern on this is the oversight committee. I think voters have been burned in the past, pardon the pun, because we have passed bonds and the money has not been spent in a timely manner or appropriately. I'm unhappy that the oversight committee only has the CAO, CLA, mayor, chief of police and the fire chief. I think clearly somebody from the city council, hopefully the head of public safety committee could be on that, maybe budget and finance could be on there. And I think the major oversight on the oversight committee is the community. I think you must have citizens on this oversight committee to ensure that every single, again, neighborhood is comfortable with taxing themselves and then making sure that we spend this appropriately. So I'd like to see item four changed to include citizens and then members of key council committees on this oversight committee. And then maybe just tell us one more time, what makes this difference than the last two? Why will this pass when the other two failed? But speak to the oversight committee.
Well, let me respond to the oversight committee. I have, I think there's two kinds of oversight committees. One is the, kind of the project management of the bond, which I think should stay the way it is. And there can be an oversight committee with citizens, et cetera, to oversee that committee. But I think the day-to-day oversight for the project management, the problem we've had in the past relative to bonds has been twofold. One is, as Mr. Holden indicated, that there has been miscommunication relative to what projects we in fact are going to build. The 19 and 20 stations in the 1989 bond issue were alluded to, but they were not specified as projects and I think there was a criticism. So, secondly, is that we don't get them done.
All right. With all due respect, the voters have only one accountable person on this oversight committee, which is the mayor, in terms of an elected representative. And I think the voters have got to be convinced that there is accountability on this oversight committee and I think just to say, well, there'll be another one, is not good enough for the voters. They've got to see it in the language that we include to have more accountability, more elected officials and clearly more citizens in the oversight committee or they're never going to vote for.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not yet the previous person, unfortunately. Sorry, Mr. Brinson. I'll try to be brief. Ms. Kowski spoke of a, of a new day and a new partnership and I think that is important. And the chief and I went on a ride along in the 13th council district last week. I've spent a lot of time in Rampart, I know Councilmember Reyes is as well. None of us would deny the need for facilities and upgrading that and making sure that that is something that we have on the ballot. And I support that and I support the specifics here. But I want to pick up on something that Councilmember Hahn spoke about, that I think is very important for the public and very important for the process. We have a process here in which, there weren't committee hearings, but that was two years ago. We have a process in which ultimately voters are going to be paying for these bonds. And you know me, I'm probably a council as much as anybody a tax and spend liberal. So for me to be saying this, I think really says something about what we're trying to accomplish here in terms of process and oversight. And yes, Councilmember Perry, you can quote me on that. The process here, imagine if we're talking about a new day here, imagine something truly revolutionary, where when we're thinking about bonds and first it's 550 and then we add an amendment which is probably a well-needed amendment to 600, we have this piling on process with so little public input. If we had not only neighborhood councils involved in this, but we had committee hearings so that we heard this in finance, and I'm glad that it's the chairs of budget finance and public safety bringing this before us, but here we are a day before the deadline talking about spending $600 million in taxpayer money and we are just beginning to discuss some of the things as a body. We don't know if there's going to be much public input. And I think once this passes, it's great that we can have public input and have those committees there. And I support Councilmember Hahn's amendment so that we can begin to have this. But this is truly something that is the old way of doing bonds. What would be truly revolutionary is to have community meetings, to have the neighborhood councils discuss this, to have public hearings in the committee, to have that also in the public safety committee. That, in my eyes, would truly be a new day. And so it's a word of caution. It's a note that for all of us, we've seen this for a week, we've heard stirrings about it and we know that we need it. And yet if we truly are going to be a democratic society and try to open up this process as much as we can to people, this is one area we've never really done it in. We've never really done that with the bond process in as comprehensive a way as I think that we can. And so, colleagues, whether this goes forward or not, I would advise in future years as we begin to spend these hundreds of million dollars, which is revenue neutral for us, but is certainly coming out of taxpayers' wallets, that we try to open up that process and link it more tightly, especially to the neighborhood councils. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Reyes.
Council President, members of the council, I'm hearing this discussion about why we should get this on. I can share with you that, and I've said this before, in Lincoln Heights, Cypress Park, Highland Park, that 20 young people die of gang violence. Obviously, the need is there, it's obvious. Last night we had a march, a march that was dedicated to the Virgin Mary, but it was also a peace march for a community, the public was invited. In the middle of a storm, you had 300 to 500 people marching down Cypress Avenue. These are people that are frustrated. We talk about terrorism and Councilmember Hahn talks about September 11th and that is very important. By no means that should be in any way belittled or compromised. But the fact is, our neighborhoods are already living with terrorism around them. If the 18 to 20 kids, Americans that die in our streets in these neighborhoods that I'm aware of would have died in a foreign land, we would have had a different level of attention to our young people. So the fact is, we're in a position now, but we need to emphasize our ability to invest on our security over fire and police officers, but take it to the other level, we'll start building up trust with our police officers. And I know that's what happened last night. We have the LEPD, men, women in blue, in the storm with us, walking, in the storm to show their support for our communities. These are the kinds of programs, approaches, and ways in which we do our communities to build up that trust. So it's not only physical, the brick and mortar, but it's how we address and cooperate with each other with our neighborhoods, organizations. Whether they be religious, whether they be service groups, whether they be PTAs, it doesn't matter. We need to take it to another level. And believe me, our neighborhoods are living with terrorism in their own streets and we need to change that. Thank you.
Mr. Laban.
President, members of the council, I rise to support this bond issue, I rise to support the police and fire department in this effort here. I recall the 20th police station discussion years ago. And if I believe right, Chief Parks, they picked the number, I think it was $196 million, $179, because it was under $200 million. It had nothing to do with the numbers of what the reality was. So there's an opportunity here to serve the much-needed, very busy heart of the city, of the Wilshire, Rampart, Hollywood area with the 20th police station. I think that's extremely important. But also, these other police stations such as West Valley and Harbor and in Van Nuys, all in Hollidex, all need replacements. I've been to them all, they certainly need replacements. I would like to ask the chief, not on this issue, but in the future, to look at Northeast, although it has been converted and it's old industrial building, it's not a community police station, it is an old industrial building on San Fernando Road. But the potential is there, if this bond issue passes, to look at that as far as any conversion for metropolitan use and we can then try to find a community-based facility for Northeast Police Station. I wanted to put that on the table. I also want to talk about oversight. I'm chairperson of the audits committee. I think it's very important at some point that something be funneled through on a regular basis, that we see this, that we inform the public, that we inform the public. You know, I'm a little bit of a historian about our great city and I have many, many books and brochures and pamphlets. And I came across a 1960 Los Angeles Times supplement that talked about what the city is doing for the public. We don't tell the public enough about what we're doing. And I don't know, Mr. Deep, but do we inform the city, do we mail to every person in the city information about what we're doing and how we're doing it? You, not the politicians, the city. Because maybe the city clerk could answer that at some time in the future, but what I would like to put on the table is that we inform the public about not just this bond issue, but every bond issue. I'm proud of the park bond issues that I've helped fight with John Farrell's leadership to get on the table and get approved in 1992. And I'm proud of every time I went to a community meeting and represented this city and said you could vote yes or you could vote no. But if you vote yes, this is what you get for your community. This is what you get, new police stations, new animal shelters, new fire stations. That's very important for us to do and to share to the people of this community the need for what is out there. We have to oversee this operation of this great city. And we do that for providing better facilities for our people who work there. And this will do that, this bond issue will do that. So I did want to put the audit committee on as a possibility for oversight in the future. I do want to put on the table that we must communicate better, Mr. Clerk, with all the public and maybe in the voter pamphlet, we could do that and have a report card, a report card of what bond issues we've had in the past and how they were doing to maintain it in the future. And I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Laban. Mr. Zain.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I have a couple of questions for the fire chief and the police chief. I was at 105 last night, sir, and they have a paramedic unit that has to mark out in the elements. Is there any funding to give some kind of enclosure for the paramedic unit?
That was the amendment including the $25 million in capital improvements to address those stations that need to be modified, that will be down the road before they will be up for replacement, that we have to accommodate the additional ambulances and additional resources that we'll be putting out there.
Okay. Thank you. Chief Parks, the metro jail, the cost of that metro jail seems to be extremely high. The current metro jails within Parker Center, are there provisions to do something with Parker Center in addition to metro jail, which are going to be totally separate?
I think that Parker Center has to be something totally separate, but the game plan in the long run is not to build another administration building with a jail as part of it. Jail should stand alone, it should be upgraded to a level one, which we currently have been grandfathered in. We do not meet state requirements of a level one jail. So this new facility would allow expansion to about 500 beds. It allows almost the entire metropolitan city, prisoners there without having individual jails at local stations and it also allows us to come up to standards. But in the future, our primary jail in the metropolitan area should not be a part of the administration building, but Parker Center is going to have to be dealt with separately from this bond.
Okay, so that's not a part of this at all?
The only thing, a part of this would be money in this bond fund to repair a variety of stations, to upgrade them, that would be designated as, that plan in this bond fund is developed, but there's money in this bond fund to do that, is to upgrade a variety of facilities at Parker Center, would be one of them, to do some moderate upgrades and repairs.
Because I know that's critically needed, viewing that facility. Also, you mentioned the valley bomb operation, the valley bomb squad. Where does that plan to be located?
It's not designated a location, but we would like to have a facility so that we'd have immediate response for the 200 square miles of the valley as opposed to the response coming from Northeast Station or from the airport, which we get, our dogs are there, we get 20% of their time to deal with non-airport related events.
Okay. And currently, West Valley Station is earmarked for major improvements, the tune of $800,000. Is there a way that those dollars, and I own, they started construction and then they put it on hold, is there a way they can roll some of those dollars over into the new facility since they don't have to acquire land since they already own the land, instead of investing in a facility which in a couple of years, three years, whatever, will be ripped down in a new station? Is that possible?
No, I just want to ask Ron Deepen on that, whether, how we can deal with that, I don't know.
Because it's an allocation now for $800,000.
I think we can arrange that. I'd have to look at exactly the source of funds.
And that would definitely...
Prop 2 money or...
We need to find the source of funds and work it out.
Well, there are the funds now, that's my concern.
We need to find the source of funds. Okay. And then, side off, but I might comment on the estimates for the various, as opposed to anything else that's on this list, on another list, each one of these has been reviewed. We reviewed them two years ago and Bureau of Engineering has gone through it in the last couple of weeks and revised every estimate, looked at every, based on our most recent construction cost and the problems we faced at that.
construction cost and the problems we faced at that, to make sure these numbers, in fact, can be realized if this bond passes.
Okay, two more quick ones. Parking, we make sure that there's adequate parking, because it seems we built a facility, we don't have parking, and we have to come back later.
Every facility has a parking plan and also a motor transport.
Okay, and I know that the Seventy-seventh Jail, the regional jail, had a number of problems with the contractor, and he went out of business. I would ask the CLA to make sure that whoever we deal with is a resident who's out of business, pardon me? Excuse me. Someone who's not going to go out of business, and then we're stuck with it. And then I also join my colleague, I do support this bond measure, Janice Hahn, that we need to make sure that there's sufficient oversight, not only the elected officials, but oversight for the critics, especially the critics who look at Proposition BB and the Belmont disaster, and say, we don't want to get ripped off again. So I support the project, I support the measures, the appropriation of funding, but I want to make sure that when we promise someone a West Valley jail, a Harbor, a West Valley police station, a Harbor facility, et cetera, and improvements to the fire facilities, that we carry that out. And while we keep on talking terrorism, we can't forget Councilman Burnson and earthquake, because we are an earthquake country here, and these facilities continue to lapidate, we put all of our public safety employees at risk. So, thank you very much, and you are a liberal, what'd you call yourself? I'm a conservative, frugal person, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zain. Mr. Burnson.
Let me just ask, are all these projects in priority form, are they listed in priority form? Just a yes or no?
No, we'd not have been priority, no.
Okay, well, let me, I'm going to make an amendment to this, and I think it'll be beneficial. First of all, I think that all of the projects should be prioritized, because the funds that are available may not stretch that far in the, when we come down to actually doing the work, if it passes. That's number one. Number two, I would like to also move that the monies from these bond issues be placed in escrow account, to be used only for the items that are designated and promised to the voters in this particular bond measure. And I think that's important, I think that the public, we've already mentioned it twice, Burn, this is a guarantee that the money's going to be used for what it's allocated for. And third of all, there should be a timeframe on this. Now, how do we, do you have any idea, Mr. Deaton, on how long it will take, if the bond issue passes, to complete all the work that's designated in here?
I think four to five years.
Four to five years.
I might point out, I think we can make that timetable, that the, and I think your idea of the escrow is a good idea, the prioritization, though, that would mean that we would not start on all of them, and I think we need to start on all of them in order to get them done.
Well, I want to make sure that we have money for the highest priorities. I don't want to find out after the fact that we missed a top priority thing when we did some things that were at the bottom of the list, and I don't think the...
I think any of the specified projects have the highest priority, and then we use the capital improvement money to supplement if we have, if we don't meet the, but we believe that these estimates are solid, we have contingency dollars included, and we believe we can make it in that time and with those monies.
Do you think it's wise for us to put a time limit on completion, or at least start these projects?
I think you should make a commitment to start on all of them. I need to discuss it with engineering, but I, we can include something like that in the bond issue.
A reasonable period of time. Otherwise, the bond should be retired with the proceeds, if we don't use it, because the people voted for it. I don't want to see this happen again. I hope it passes, I'm going to support it, but I will tell you, as a voter and a taxpayer, they're going to look at this and say, why should we give them money if we don't know it, we've done it twice before, and it hasn't happened, and Mr. Holden was right. For once in his life, Mr. Holden was right. Anyway, that's all right, Nate, don't, I didn't mean to wake you up, Nate, it's okay.
Mr. Weiss.
Anyway, no, I love you, Nate, I'm just kidding. Nate was right, I mean, the people have voted twice, it didn't happen, this time it has to happen, we have to make sure. And I think that the most important thing that we have to provide for the public, they're going to have to help us, where this is public safety, particularly in what's, in light of what's going on in the world today, number one thing that we have to do is provide public safety. So I would urge that we do approve this, but I want to put guarantees in there that it's going to happen this time.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson, Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank the gentlemen at the table for their presentation today, and Mr. Canfield as well. I know that you and your departments have put a lot of work into this, and it's an important, necessary measure, and it's important that the council, if my colleagues on the other side can't do it today, vote unanimously to send this before the voters, because the nature of the threats we face today, or they have evolved from the threats we faced this time last year, they will evolve into new threats a year from now, and they will continue to evolve and evolve. And I wish that weren't the case, but I think we all recognize that it is the case, and for that reason, we need facilities that can evolve along with the threats. The current emergency operations center, the current bomb squad facilities that we have, it may or may not be adequate to the task today, but they are not likely to evolve and to be flexible, to provide us with the flexibility that we need as the threats evolve over time. And so that's why, for me, it's critical that we put this matter before the voters. The other thing I wanted to say, in response obliquely to what my colleague Ms. Hahn said, is that because I believe in community-based policing, and because I believe in involving the community in the process of making their neighborhoods more secure, I think it's more important than ever that we place this measure before the voters, because we have police stations right now, which are not warm and inviting and accommodating to the public. We need new facilities, which will invite the public in, which will really provide an institution where the community can participate in community-based policing. And I think it's very important that what you've all done is craft a comprehensive plan here that is balanced, it's balanced throughout the parts of the city, in the inner city and in the central city area, which are high crime rates, and it's balanced in the San Fernando Valley. It's important. This measure is good for the city, it's good for the valley, the bomb squad facilities that you're talking about, the traffic and headquarters facilities for the valley are critical, and I urge my colleagues to support it unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Before calling on the next speaker, I'd like to recognize Ms. Hahn for an introduction.
Members of the council, I'm sorry to interrupt briefly, but I understand that they have to leave, so I wanted us to give a special welcome and recognition to women leaders from Switzerland, participants in the international visitor program of the U.S. Department of State. This is a group of women who are involved in the state and national level in both issues that are national and international, particularly affecting women, and they've come here to the United States, they'll be here from November thirteenth and fourteenth, and they will be learning about how U.S. women are facing opportunities and challenges as small business owners and in management positions in large organizations, including women at university posts. So this group, we're happy to have you here today, we appreciate your interest, and if you'd like to know about what it feels like to be a woman councilperson, there's a few of us here that would also like to talk to you about that, but please stand and be recognized, and we really are glad you're here, all the way from Switzerland. And we hope you've enjoyed this debate on the city council. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Next speaker, Mr. Holden.
I'm sorry to come in, listen to us wash that dirty laundry. You heard that, huh? I think that Ms. Hahn is right to appoint an oversight committee. We should specifically state, it should be budgeted finance, we should specifically state, it should be public safety, and Mr., regarding the audit committee, Mr. Laban, you can audit anything you want at any time, it does not have to be included in this motion, he's not even listening, but the fact of the matter is that you have the authority and the power to audit any department at any time, for any purpose, outstanding information shared with the council, which could be used to be a very influential committee. And Mr. Reyes, I understand by those twenty people got shot and so on and died, but putting another police station, police division, won't change that, although we like, we hope that it would, people will. Programs for the youth, and that's something that we need to put a lot of attention on. And we can vote for these buildings, but they're not going to make our neighborhoods safer to people, and how well-trained the police officers are, how well-trained the fire personnel are. Now, I know that you two chiefs served really at the pleasure of the politician, and very honestly, I feel very sorry about it, for you from time to time. Montre, you, you know, you came here and you told us about paramedics, and you didn't want to merge paramedics, don't ask it, but in your own heart, I didn't think you wanted to merge paramedics with a regular fire department. But the politician said you must do it, you're going to save money, not in China, and I told him what the problem was going to be, and it is. Same thing with the bond measures, they'll come down and say, for example, we had Mr. Hari, who was our chief engineer, sat at that table, and said we needed money to rebuild, reinforce our bridges because of the earthquake that took place in San Francisco. That's what he said. The voters voted for it, in the crisis, they voted for it, and then we had another earthquake in the valley, and the bridges stood, so they took that money, they had allocated about less than a hundred million dollars to renovate City Hall. We stole City Hall, make a seismic save. They put three, they took the money from the bridges in, a lot of voter people, and put three hundred million in City Hall. All the, it was close to three hundred million? Two hundred million, Mr. Deaton? Come on, I don't even want to talk about it, you know how much it was? How much was it then?
Roughly a hundred and sixty million?
It was going there.
A hundred, the project cost three hundred million dollars roughly.
Okay, now, now, I don't want to say it off the...
A hundred and forty million dollars.
No, it was three hundred, three hundred million, like I said.
And a hundred and forty million dollars.
Don't take up my time, you're taking up my time. Okay, but you know, you're taking up my time. The fact of the matter is that you didn't want to cut that deal, she understands that, but the fact of the matter, when the politician comes down and says, you must do this, you shall do that, and that's what you did, is that right? You merged the paramedics, they took the money from the bridges, they put it in City Hall, and we do need this oversight committee, and I'm going to sit down. Public safety, budgeted finance, audit can look at it anytime they choose to do so, but by and large, the public needs to know, where's the TV, so I can tell them. The politician is the one that's causing you the problem. They're the ones, and only they're the one. They take your money that you say should be used for one purpose, they turn around and use it for another, and we hope that this is not the case. If I vote for it, be sure, I'll be gone, but it will not be the case.
Thank you, Mr. Holden, Ms. Zakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. This has been a really good discussion, and I appreciate the contributions that some of the members have made. First of all, let me just say that regarding the issue, I think Mr. Garcetti had asked about the assessment of these, members of the council, there was about four or five years ago, a major effort, citizen-driven, under the former administration, to look at an overall public facility need, and issued a report. It was a huge report, and the decision at that time was to go on essentially about seven-year increments, as Chief Parks indicated, to take off manageable bites, to deliver the products committed and the projects committed, and gain assurance and responsibility and respectability from the voters in terms of the delivery. There was also, and I think Ms. Hahn was interesting to raise the issue of the citizen oversight committee, like Mr. Laban, I'm a little bit of a historian here, although we don't have to go too far back. In nineteen ninety-eight, former colleagues Rudy Subornich and Joel Wax brought in a motion regarding the formation of a bond oversight committee, and this motion says that the council shall adopt a policy to require that all future general obligation bonds submitted to the voters shall require a citizen bond oversight committee created of five people appointed by the mayor and the council president, and the council did act on this, and it required that each future bond member include this, that this citizens' bond oversight committee would meet quarterly, submit an annual report to the city council, and that the committee members should include people who have some degree of expertise in finance, construction management, and community participation, community leadership. And the council actually amended it, Mr. Laban, to say that that report should then be submitted to the government efficiency committee, which I think is today the audist committee, so that these things that we've asked for today were in fact adopted, and in fact, to show you that we followed through, here is the voter path of two thousand on the last bond issue, and in that, informing the voters, was this requirement, that there would be two oversight committees, one, the technical oversight committee that Mr. Deaton mentioned, and the other, a citizens' oversight panel of five professional citizens, who would provide the oversight as required by the, by the city council action. So, members of the council, I think we have looked at it before, I think we have the right strategy, I think there's no question we ought not to let up, and we ought to hold everyone responsible to deliver the projects. I think the idea, as Mr. Weiss has said, that particularly in our facilities, and our, both our police and our fire departments, we're hearing from both the community police inside and from the fire departments, being a place that we need to inform the public, really create this partnership in a way that's never been done before, we need to provide our facilities that are not only giving the public safety professionals the information and the technical facilities that they need, but also the kind of facilities that communities can come to, can learn, can participate in, and really start to cement those relationships throughout the city. So I think this is a partnership whose time has come, it's a very timely matter, and I think that we have learned how to do it right after agreeing with Mr. Holden, and that in the past it had not been done right. So I think the protections are now built in, and I think that the amendments that are being brought forward today help to spread that around in terms of each community having in each of the facilities some kind of improvement that will relate to the public and provide this kind of responsiveness that I think we are all now very much going to have to be able to demand.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Council President, members, one is I want to make sure that as we improve these buildings, we improve with the technology that allows for more time for our police officers to be out in the neighborhoods, on the streets, as opposed to, you know, being behind a desk, doing reporting, et cetera, et cetera, with our technology, our ability to state-of-the-art handheld, you know, mechanisms, hoping that that is the way we're designing and looking at these buildings, when we're looking at cost estimates.
We are providing for all the fiber optics and the necessary technology to be included in these facilities. The facilities are eligible for bond financing, actually handheld equipment is not, so we will have to supplement this with those kinds of things that we, on the handheld situation, we are out to, out to an RFP for those. I might point out that these facilities, EOC, fire dispatch, and stations, et cetera, all are to better manage our resources, to put, to have the information through technology, et cetera, to provide that information, so they can put the people in the right place at the right time.
Councilman Holden, this is coming my way here, I want to emphasize that our police officers need to be shown the kind of respect that they deserve, so they can have the frame of mind to do the best job they can. If you look at the pictures, Mr. Holden, of the reports of the conditions the buildings are in, and the frame of mind our officers are in, when they have to be sharing locker space, they don't have privacy, they don't have a place to be able to at least decompress, if you will, from the person who they work, then how do you expect them to be strong as police officers? How do you expect to have an environment where they can engender trust to their communities? So it's not just about facilities, it's about we treat, how we treat our civil servants, and how we, as an institution, can show leadership, and basically request the rest of the voting body, and those that will vote on this measure, that this is needed. So I stand here in support of this bond, in support of this effort, to hopefully allow us to reach multiple strategic goals. Thank you.
Mr. Laban.
Mr. President, just a couple of quick questions. Mr. Deaton, how much per average homeowner in Los Angeles will this affect their tax bill?
About thirty dollars a year, thirty-two dollars a year.
And also, I wanted to ask the chiefs that they work with all other levels of government, all entities, for trying to reduce land costs, whether it's with water, power, whether it's with the school district, or whomever, to look at joint combinations, to look at land costs. And also, Councilman Weiss made a good point about it's good for the whole city, and what makes me so proud so many times is when we've had incidents in the city, and that North Hollywood shootout, the commander then was Scott LaChausse, is now a deputy chief, he was at Thirty-Ninth and Adams when he got a page, that he jumped in his car to come out and lead the suppression. Rick Mesa, Metropolitan Officer, was in Alleejen Park, training at the academy, jumped in.
in his car with other officers and raced out there. And in my neighborhood, engine 56, has heavy rescue 56, which serves the whole district, the whole city of Los Angeles, a special tool of an apparatus, so it means that we can work together and have this opportunity to serve all of Los Angeles in the best service possible. So I just wanted to rise again and support this measure. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, just quickly, again, I support this, but as we've all been talking about, full disclosure is important, information is important, and Mr. Deaton, could you just again respond to our new city charter, section 325, that says, before we authorize any more bond indebtedness, we must be provided with a debt impact statement from, I believe, it doesn't say in the charter, but I believe our intention was to have the city controller provide us a debt impact statement. And when, when in this process are we supposed to know how much debt overall we're incurring as a city for this issue?
You're directing the city attorney to bring back both an ordinance and a resolution before you adopt that resolution by charter, you're required to have that information. So it will be, when this is scheduled, either the ordinance or the resolution accompanying that, will be that, that requirement with your, with the necessary action.
Thank you very much, and I believe we are now ready for some votes. Number of amendments for us.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. However, clarification on Mr. Labange's comments, were those amending motions to add?
Nope.
Okay, the first amendment...
How many votes do we need in order to move this vote today? Would one vote, vote saying no, put it over for a week, or does it move forward, or, what's the rules on that? You need... Yeah, we have to have a unanimous vote today? Eight? And then it's comebacks to us anyway, the language. All right. So nobody can hurt it today, in other words, but I'll just stay over here then. It's Holden proof. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Burnson had remanding motion that the project should be prioritized and the money placed in an escrow account to be used only for the items in the bond measure, and that there should be a timeframe included.
Okay, just, Mr. Deaton? That the items, the project would be specified, and there'd be a reasonable timeframe, but prioritization, because we're having to start on all, and not that you were going to drop that part. Okay, so the specified projects and the reasonable timeframe.
Just not used for anything other than projects that are...
No problem. Okay. Is that clear, Madam Clerk? Okay. Members, questions, comments on this amending motion? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. Burnson, the amendment is adopted.
And there was also an amending motion by Ms. Councilmember Hahn to include citizens in the Oversight Committee, and also the appropriate council committees, budget and finance and public safety.
Ms. Hahn, did you... Consistent with council policy previously adopted? Okay, now let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is also adopted right now.
There's the written amending motions, 32B by Councilmember Weiss and Zine. It's a recommendation 32B, or a recommendation 1B amended to add 50 million in capital costs for existing police facilities and 25 million in capital costs, and this has been distributed to all the council members.
Okay, everybody has had a chance to review that? Questions, comments? Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is adopted.
Okay, the next amendment...
Hold on. Mr. Deaton, Mr. Barmatia, you're not done yet? We're still going through all the amendments. Madam Clerk.
The last amending motion is by Pacheco, Ms. Misakowski and Labange, and it has also been distributed to all the council members.
Okay, and the content of that motion? The content of the motion?
I'm sorry, yes, Mr. President, that has been distributed.
Okay, questions, comments? Seeing none, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
We now have before us item 32, as amended. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved, send that forthwith to the mayor, item number three, forthwith also. Thank you very much, Chief. And 11, forthwith. Next item, please.
Item number two is on the desk, it's a public hearing item, public hearing has been closed.
Mr. Weiss.
Mr. President, I appreciate your deferring this matter. Colleagues, I would move that we deny the appeal on number two, as the relevant homeowners have reached an agreement with the relevant developer here, and based upon that, I believe the chair of the relevant committee, Mr. Burnson agrees that it should therefore be denied, so that would be my motion.
Okay, Mr. Weiss moves to deny the appeal, Ms. Misakowski, did you wish to speak?
No.
Any other members wishing to speak? We have a motion to deny the appeal before us, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
The appeal is denied. Next item, please.
Item number 30 is on the desk, and the committee report has been distributed.
Committee report has been distributed?
Yes, it has, Mr. President.
Members wishing to speak on item number 30? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Item 30 is approved. Next item, please.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on the agenda under council's jurisdiction.
Thank you very much, public comment period for today's meeting, the council calls forward Detective Rick McElroy.
Mr. President, I'm Rick McElroy from Organized Crime and Vice Division, and I didn't come here today to ask for anything, I came here to give you guys something. A lot of you were council deputies when I started Operation ABC through the leadership of Chief Parks, and also the assistance of the mayor's office in criminal justice planning and preparing each grant each year. What we've distributed to you was an application for an award with the National Commission Against Drunk Driving, of which has already been distributed to each one of you. The reason I'm bringing this up today is because we won this prestigious award, and we're the only law enforcement agency in the United States that did win this out of 11 categories that they give out awards, only one is in law enforcement. This was prepared, and it gives a background and a history from Operation ABC since its inception in 1996, and for many of you council members that are new, there's some, a lot of applicable enforcement and educational programs for each and every one of your districts that can be applied, that have been applied. And the reason I wanted to bring this to your attention, these have been distributed, so that if you need to get ahold of us or have some specific questions regarding problematic alcoholic beverage control locations within your council district, on the third page is my card and my partner Steve Morris' card that can be pulled away, because it's just rubber glued, and if you can give us a call, we'd be happy to come speak with you regarding any problematic locations that you have in your specific areas, and we can work with them directly. So all it was is thank you very much for allowing Operation ABC to continue each year through the funding, and the chief has also given us an extra sergeant to match the funding that the state has given us. So we're just here today as an informational thing, and hope you can give us a call, we'd be happy to come and talk to you.
Thank you very much, and keep up the good work. Next council call forward, Mr. Candy Del Maris.
Thank you, Mr. President, and council members, I want to thank Councilman Reyes for your salient comments in regards to neighborhoods from San Fernando to San Pedro. A lot of neighborhoods do live in terrorism, and sooner or later, ladies and gentlemen, we as parents and you as politicians are going to have to answer those questions and deal with those issues. Thank you, sir, for those strong comments.
Thank you, Mr. Maris. This concludes the public comment period for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Let's clear the desk.
Council has motions for posting in referral.
Those motions are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk, Councilmember Burnson requests to be excused tomorrow to leave at 11:45, city business, a motion is required.
Ms. Misakowski moves, Mr. Burnson is excused.
And Councilmember Galanter requests to be excused tomorrow to leave at noon, city business, a motion is required.
Ms. Hahn moves, Ms. Galanter is excused.
That clears the desk for closed session.
Thank you very much. In conformance with California law, the council will now adjourn to closed session. I ask the guards to please clear the chambers. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Item number 28 is settlement in the case of Glover versus State of Los Angeles, it's a worker compensation case in the amount of $115,000.
Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith on that. Next item, please.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Do we have adjourning motions today? I believe we do. Mr. Holden? Ms. Zine?
Mr. Deaton. And colleagues, I have a journeying tribute to Josie Martinez, a four-year-old girl. Josie died about 11:30 a.m. after jumping from the GM Suburban, the family-owned, as it rolled in the driveway. She and her sister had been playing inside the vehicle, the vehicle shifted into neutral, and she passed away crushed by the vehicle. Josie's Martinez, family friends of Sherri Adams from my office, Josie leaves her mother Carmen, her father George, her big sister Lisa, and her brother Adrian. May she rest in peace.
Mr. President, why don't we just do all members on that, please? All members. Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, members of council, I think we should all adjourn in memory of the people of the American Airlines flight in New York City, and the people of New York City who tragically perished in yesterday's accident.
All members on that. I mean, clearly, that incident in and of itself is a tragedy, but on the heels of September 11th, I think it certainly weighs even heavier on the hearts and souls of our brothers and sisters in New York.
And I may add, the day before, I was out at Dockweiler Beach, where the American Airlines personnel and United personnel just completed a cross-country run, and some of the people from Dallas, where their hub is, was there to greet it, along with Chief Parks and Lieutenant Governor Bustamante, and with this tragedy happening the next day, it certainly holds heavy on all the people.
Any others?
Yes.
Ms. Perry.
Wanted to adjourn in memory of Ernest Dove, 24-years-old, father of one. He was murdered in front of his home this past Friday. His mother and other siblings have worked with me now and in the past, and he leaves behind his mother, Melody, father Reginald, sisters Nevada and Chavada, and younger brother Joshua, and the person who shot him is still outstanding.
President, members, I would hope that, I expect Ms. Perry to bring in a request for a reward to be posted for the person responsible for killing your staff, his mother works for you, is that right?
Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you very much, this meeting is adjourned.